Home to the Finance Admin Committee. Just run around by the council, so we just have that on at the end be fairly quick.
Okay.
And David says he's logging in now.
Thanks.
Overtime, two words.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and hit record.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Fulham City Council. City Recorder could be at the roll call, please.
Absolutely. Jessica Andrade.
President.
Catherine Bisco.
Here.
Ruth Causey.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
Here.
Teresa Nielsen.
Here.
I don't see David yet. Wait a minute, he just popped up. I could yodel that you don't want me to do that.
I'd like to see that.
David Love.
Here. I am here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I will be meeting the meeting tonight as Mayor Jones is not available this evening. And with that, I think we can move right into the new business. And I'm wondering if Kevin, you would like to speak to the Landmark Drive? LID project bid award.
Good evening, everyone. Kind of cut me off, grabbed what I didn't have really anything to do with landmark project. It was an LID. But we have a contractor we haven't worked with before, a Durbin excavating that is our low bidder to do that project. I did a little looking around and they've been around for a lot of years and looks like they are in pretty good standing with everything, so I don't know that I have any concerns with that. They have contacted the city engineer and are anxious to get started on that, so imagine we'll see that project start real soon, provided everything passes tonight.
Thank you. Let's see, there is a recommend motion. I'd like to enter the team a motion to initiate the discussion. Counselor Lo.
Yes, I moved that the city council awarded contract for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars to Durbin Excavating LLC and approve a contingency of one hundred and fifteen thousand for the Landmark Drive Local Improvement District Project and direct staff to prepare the assessment ordinance for council consideration post-construction.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A second. Three ways. Okay, motion by Counselor Lo, seconded by Counselor Cosby. I would like to note that the contingency is up to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Not to exceed. And a discussion on the on the motion, Counselor Lo.
Well, that's that's a good point because I noticed in this one and another one, we have different wording. So we'll we say one hundred and fifteen thousand exactly, or we'll say up to. And then in the engineer's report and something, it'll say plus or minus. So I specifically went with one hundred and fifteen because if we, I mean, up to, what does that mean? Seventy-five? Up to, I mean, it just didn't, it didn't seem exact enough, so that's why I chose what I did. But be that as it may, I am curious, and maybe it's been asked already, but fifteen percent, it seems like a big chunk of money. I mean, why do we have, what why is fifteen percent considered reasonable? And what's the thought process that goes into that?
Generally, it's been about twenty percent and they've been going a little higher on contingencies because of the cost of materials and fuel and everything else that seems to be changing real rapidly.
Historically, have we usually needed to use all of that contingency or most of it?
No, hardly any of it generally.
So then there's a likelihood that this is just an abundance of caution and we're not going to have to use it, much of it, all of it.
Yeah, I think it's more of an engineering type thing. They feel more comfortable going into a project with contingency that's identified rather than you know, get caught with not having enough there.
Okay. Thank you.
And Kevin is intended to be consistently up to one hundred and fifteen thousand. Or is it?
What?
The wording in the motion is up to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
I think it's a not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand.
I'm amenable to to that. I just was curious why the wording might be different, different cases. Anyway, I'm agreeable to up to one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Okay. Yeah, the was engineer's recommendation was one hundred and fifteen thousand.
Counselor Andrade.
Thank you for this information. I I can't remember the beginning talks of this. The people who there were more than fifty people or fifty percent of those affected by the street who requested this LID, correct? Yeah, and so they're aware of the costs of what it could be. They got that estimate already. I'm just zeroing in on the city manager recommendation. I don't know if you said this, Counselor Lo. I thought you might have said it. To hold, direct staff to hold off on preparing the assessment ordinance. Did you include that or?
As city manager.
Yeah, I can chime in. So what was approved when the LID was approved by the council was the engineer's estimate of up to eight hundred thousand dollars. And so that was the original estimate from the engineer. And so that's what's been approved for the LID going forward. But as explained in the memo, you really don't want to do the assessments until you know the actual cost of construction, so I agree with some of the concerns about that contingency. I would hate to lump that contingency in there and do the assessments, including that contingency. If we don't have them to use it, then we got to go back and reassess the properties, pass a separate ordinance. So I kind of just explained in the memo, you can do the assessment now, which gives the affected parties a little bit of notice now, but it more than likely you're going to have to update it and change it later. So for the sake of limiting confusion for both the council and for the the property owners, my recommendation is we just wait till the project's done. We know what the total cost was, how much, if any, the contingency we had to use. We'll run the total calculations and that's the number we'll give out to the property owners and do the assessments at that time.
Yeah, I was getting to that point. Because, but I guess the the question I have is do they at least have some sort of, well, I guess they do, since they know that the project is was estimated to be eight hundred thousand dollars, so they're aware that it's some portion of that that they'll be paying.
Right.
Thank you.
And it was the, if you recall, the engine, the original engineer's estimate does an assessment, so it does break out if the project was exactly eight hundred thousand dollars. It has a an anticipated assessment there, so they've seen that already.
Counselor Bisco.
So a couple of questions on this. I too wonder, we're looking at, we estimated eight hundred thousand dollars and that was the original estimate and assessment provided to these property owners. Have we, I think to Counselor Andrade's point in part, you do the affected parties know that this assessment is over ten percent of what the original assessment was? So there's a small group of property owners there. So with that contingency, we're at eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, give or take. So that would be my question, and if they haven't been notified, I would be hesitant to move forward with this until at least been given the opportunity to weigh in. So we presented an LID that was at X percent of dollars, or excuse me, at X assessment of eight hundred thousand dollars. They voted to support that based on those dollars. It seems like it would be important at least to give them the opportunity to provide feedback. But to the point of the contingency and knowing how volatile our our materials and our supply lines are, I would say that it would be important to embed a not to exceed clause in here, and I I heard, I think, Fear mentioned it, but I don't see that in any of this language. It seems that would be important because here too, again, I wouldn't want to come back and say, well, surprise, it actually costs nine hundred thousand or nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as you can see by the estimates, that's possible. I think that's an unknown that as a property owner, I wouldn't want to run the risk of in today's market. So just a recommendation to include a NTE clause. And then also the opportunity, making sure that these property owners have in fact been notified that these are the dollars we're looking at at the city council here.
Kevin, do you want to, you or Chris want to address the inclusion of the not to exceed clause? Is that in the in the bid award or the contract that would be awarded by the city, city manager?
So that amount is what we're looking for the council to approve. The contract with the winning bid will be for the amount that they've bitted at without that additional contingency. So that contingency will essentially be the city council signed off that if we need to do that amount, we can still feel comfortable moving forth the project like Mr. Fear said, we don't want to, you know, get three quarters into a project and have a few overages and then be in trouble of not having council approval to to go over if we need to for you know, an expense that we weren't expecting. So they'll be held to that overage unless they can submit documentation to the city showing why they've got an unanticipated overage of some sort.
Engineers bet out any of the change orders real heavily and they're not just awarded to them because they've asked for it. The contingency's in for more things, more more things is that when you're, when you start digging in the ground, you all of a sudden might find something that wasn't there before. We on Main Street hit a fuel tank during the two thousand seventeen project, so we had to have contingency money that was set aside for that, paid for the removal of the tank. I don't know that we would see any on Landmark Lane, and to my knowledge, it's still private property. Is that right, Chris? Until this project's done and we take it over, so.
I think the intent is to transfer the the ownership first and then move forth the project. That makes the permitting method a little bit simpler. But no, Kevin's exactly right. This, you know, we mentioned some of the things you'd normally have a contingency for. But things like we mentioned that, you know, if the cost of materials goes up a little bit, that's going to be on the contractor who bid the project. If the fuel cost goes up a little bit, that's going to be on the contractors while we're going to hold them to their original bid. The contingency is like Kevin said, is if you find a a pipe in the ground that you didn't know was there, a a storage tank for a few full of fuel or fuel and water, whatever, you got it now removed. So it's more continues for something that's outside of the scope of what's been bid on already. But again, that would be, you know, if you don't have a little bit of contingency set up side, then you you're kind of silly to move forward with the project that has some unknowns in the ground that you just don't know about. The intent would be to not spend any of that money, but good to have it there if you needed to. And if and when, I guess, is to Counselor Bisco's concerns about what's been approved by the by the city council already. It's the the council that votes to approve the local improvement district. Residents and the property owners have had a chance to have the public hearing, but they'll have another chance prior to the ordinance getting passed, which actually sets those assessments. So just to paint a scenario, say we hit a storage tank in the ground, it costs twenty thousand dollars to remove it, and we have to dip into this hundred and fifteen thousand dollars we put towards. We what we would actually do is we would either contract with the the current contractor that's on site, or we may contract with somebody, another firm outside of this current bid. We might get somebody else altogether to come in and take care of that tank for us. That's going to be an overage. When we wrap that in, we can choose to either wrap that into the local improvement district or not to wrap it into local improvement district. What we're saying at this time is for the city's budgeting purposes, we want to have that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars there in case we get an overage. That doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to drop that into the LID. What got approved for the LID is up to the eight hundred thousand dollar amount. So there's two different things. You've got the LID no more than the eight hundred thousand dollars. That's what was put in the public notice. That's what they heard at the hearing. That's what the city council proved. But now we're talking about a construction budget, and for that construction budget, we want not only that eight hundred thousand, but we want some additional contingency there in case we run into something else. Does that clarify things a little bit?
Thank you. Counselor Lo.
I have a question on page two of the West Tech engineers report. And this is just to to understand or to clarify my understanding. So the the very first paragraph talks about the notice is going to be subject to final authorization by city council, which presumably we're doing tonight. And if we do do that, then there's a seven, a statute of time limit of seven day bid protest period. So my question is where, who is notified of this bid and who can protest? I mean, does this extend to the property owners on the on the LID, or is it just to the other bids, the people that submitted bids? It'd just be a good thing to understand how this works. Thanks.
Kevin, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, the protest period is for the other bidders to contest the the outcome of the bids. We had one, the only one actually that I've ever seen is the one on Main Street when we did the sewer and water. There was a limit to, or there is a minimum requirement that the contractor that bid on that had to have X amount of feed of pipe bursting experience of sizes of of mainline pipe. They submitted that and one of the projects that they were using didn't identify the pipe as mainline pipe, but it was sufficient size to be considered mainline. So another contractor that was the second bidder contested that. And it ended up getting worked out through the two contractors and the the it was dropped at that point, so we moved on with the the actual low bidder.
Mr. Brewer, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the only person who can protest. So you the the intent to award goes out, it identifies who the bid is going to go to. It's only the next eligible bidder who has the ability to protest that. I guess you could keep sliding down that, no, I think these two ahead of me or or two lower bids, there's some defect in those. But the only people who can protest would be someone who could have the contract if they are correct.
Thank you, Counselor Bisco.
So again, a couple of questions. I'm curious then. So the motion as it reads, based on what the city manager was saying, it the motion as it reads sounds more like that contingency isn't like I'm hearing two separate things. We have the eight hundred thousand or seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars as proposed by the firm. And then we have this hundred and fifteen thousand dollar contingency, which sounds like it's not necessarily, like that sounds like it's in-house and we're just capturing it for budget purposes to make sure that we acknowledge it. I'm not sure that the motion language correctly either identifies or separates those two items. It reads more to me like we are giving that contingency to the contractor in the language as it is written here. If in fact that is just a contingency for us for budget purposes, then I would want to make sure that the language reflected that appropriately. I do have a couple of questions. I know that Counselor Causey had shared some questions about this process and some others as well. Do we, since I don't see the full bid proposals in our documentation, do we know that this firm will be carrying the proper bonding for performance and payment and making sure that this work actually gets completed to the standards that are required? Is that somewhere, it's not embedded here that I can see, maybe I'm just missing it? So can that be confirmed as well before we issue a notice to proceed? Or excuse me, notice to award, intent to award?
Kevin or Chris, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, the city engineer reviews that. That's part of what we pay them for in their review of the bid process is that all of those issues are addressed. So the Murray's, or excuse me, West Tech Engineering will oversee that and make sure that's done.
And Counselor Bisco, did you want to recommend any amendment to the motion to address your other concerns?
Well, first I would like to. Yes, but I'm going to ask for some help there, I think. But I would also like to know, so I don't know that West Tech has provided a performance and payment bond, and I know that sometimes those things get overlooked. Is there a way that we can have that verification? I understand that they're the ones that are doing this process, but I would feel better knowing that we are in fact bonded to make sure this work happens. And I think I would ask Council Brewer, what might be the appropriate language for that motion? Before attempting to make one, and how do we isolate the bid amount only and then the contingency so that is relative to the budget?
So thinking about bonding, you would usually have the contractor bonded and that would be a part of the contract requirements. I I think that's pretty easy to check. It is also a requirement of state law that they have a performance and payment bond. In terms of separating the motions, I think you could just ask to have the question. I think you 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 asked to have the question separated. So you would have a motion to approve the contract for the base amount, and then you could have a separate motion on the contingency. And I think that would just be a motion to divide the questions, the actual wording.
So you're recommending a motion to divide the motion as was presented? That would be the amendment?
Yes, and it would divide it into those two components. The the main whatever that was, eight, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Would be.
Counselor Bisco, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. So then I'd like to make, well, okay, so I'm unclear. Is this really an amendment or is this just a separate motion? It almost feels like a separate motion.
It is a separate motion to divide the question. And you can make that now. It's one of those privileged motions where.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to separate the did you say question? It seems like an awkward space. Okay.
But that's the way it's worded.
Okay. I make a motion to separate the question. I guess that's the motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion by Counselor Bisco, seconded by Counselor Andrade. Is there any discussion of this motion, Counselor Lo?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Counselor Brewer. Does it really make a difference whether it's the original motion or it's it's made into two motions? I'm not necessarily opposed to having it, but I just wondering if there's really any significant or any real difference in in this.
What it what it might do is give some ease to the council in if if you wanted to amend the amount of the contingency up or down.
And at what point like we want to do that?
At the point where, so you would, if the question is divided, then you have a motion which is to award a contract for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and ninety-eight cents to to whoever. That would be mo, that would be question one, the council would would vote on that. Question two would be a motion to approve a contingency of up to one hundred and fifteen thousand. And then that could be amended in any way the council wanted to.
Okay, thank you.
The first part, I think, is a little more challenging because that's the contract amount. And I I don't think you can approve it for something less. It would just be, yeah, that's, we're not approving the contract.
Point of information is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand and ninety-eight dollars. Not cents.
Okay. Can I, can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is that to what Counselor Bisco's request to divide the question into two components. Component number one would be award a contract for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars to Durbin Excavating for the Landmark Drive Local Improvement District Project and direct staff to prepare the assessment ordinance for council consideration post-construction. And then question number two would be to approve a contingency of up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the Landmark Landmark Drive project. Is that correct, Mr. Brewer?
That makes sense.
Does that make, is that what you're looking for, Counselor Bisco?
Well said, and yes, that sounds correct. And just to that point is that allows us that contingency question. Like what Mr. Workman rec or suggested, the possibility we might have a different contractor come in, for example. So we've isolated the contract, we'd be approving that contract. The contingency allows us more flexibility with a separate motion in this space.
Any further questions? All right. All in favor of the motion stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Again, to clarify, you're voting on dividing the question and then you will vote individually on each question.
Okay. Is there, does anyone feel the need to vote again? Okay, all right. So the question as divided is approved. So we will.
Was that six zero?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
So we'll vote on the first question to avoid the con, the contract for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars to Durbin Excavating. All in favor, say aye. And raise your hand or raise your hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. And now we'll vote on the approval of a contingency fee of up to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the Landmark Drive Local Improvement District Project. Question, Counselor Bisco.
So just a comment again on this one. I'm hesitant actually just to move forward with that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars if we have not in fact let the LID participants or the property owners aware of this contingency. If in fact it might be coming back with a ordinance that requires them to pay this contingency. It seems like I understand that they could be part of that process after the fact, but getting an eighty-two thousand dollar bill divided amongst those property owners, they might have an opinion about that. And is it appropriate in the effort to be transparent in this process to at least give them that opportunity to know that this decision is being made? And meaning my suggestion might be that we table the contingency vote, inform the property owners, and then come back to the contingency vote once they've had that opportunity to provide feedback if they wish to do so.
City manager.
Again, I appreciate the concern. I just don't know if it's necessary at this point. If we're going to add anything on to the LID other than the eight hundred thousand dollars, our code requires that we go back out to the property owners at that time and notify them of the increase. So and until we know that we're going to use any of that contingency towards this project or that we're going to put any of that additional money into the LID and not just pay for it flat out from the city paying for it, then I I don't see the necess, the necessity to reach out to property owners at this time. I'm a little concerned about moving forward this project without a contingency in place approved by the city council. So my recommendation would be as it stands to go and get the contingency approved for the project if. go and get the contingency approved for the project if we end up having to use it. And if the council at that time decides to put it towards the LID, we can notify the property owners at that time and let them give us their opinion on that time, at that time.
Counsel Brewer, do we require a vote to table the motion?
You do require a vote to table. You don't really discuss anything other than when you would like it to be tabled. Two, by way of one suggestion, it, it would be possible just to direct the city manager to send to, to vote on it and have the city manager send a letter to the property owner saying, yeah, we approved the, this contingency and this could, this is a possibility that could come up if we end up spending it. That, there, there's nothing about this process that you couldn't do that in advance, just, just as a way of information.
Let's see, could I have added an add as to whether Counsel Andrade?
I just want to verify. So if we were to do that, the property owners could still like argue against it and we can change that contingency amount before. There's so many steps. Thank you.
So I know that you would change the contingency amount where you would, what you would be approaching the neighbors with is, you know, should the city council put additional money into the LID portion of the project for the neighbors to pay for? Or should the city just pay for that additional cost that wasn't heard? So that would be the question to the neighbors at that time.
Isn't it? Sorry, I was just going to say, but I thought we also talked about the amount and like why a hundred and fifteen thousand? So I guess there's two things to consider. Thank you.
A hundred and fifteen thousand is the comfort level that the city engineers asked for moving forward on a project of this size. That's my, the city council is being asked to approve towards this project as a contingency. Again, I'd be reluctant to move forward with this project without knowing that we had an approved contingency for the project.
Kevin, do you have a comment?
Yeah, why? I'm getting all confused here with what's really going on and what we're trying to accomplish. But the contingency is a number that they just basically say, let's throw 10%, let's throw 15% in just as a safety measure to do that. Why don't we, why doesn't the council just move on the eight hundred thousand that's already been approved by the, the owners of the property? And if we, that gives us almost a thirty three thousand dollar contingency. I don't see, I don't see us going through that in a, in a worst case scenario on this project. If we do, we can either try to find the money somewhere else, go to a man or not install sidewalks and, and just cut back some aspects of the project. Or go to a dual ditches on both sides, but a paved road. That's just a suggestion or an idea.
Counsel Bisco.
I like that idea that we might have that flexibility, but I guess, you know, I, again, I'm hesitant to ask the property owners to pay for something that we haven't even talked to them about and that contingency is building that kind of narrative in there. Like we won't move forward unless we have that contingency built in. So I guess I would not want to find out that assessment was considerably more than was anticipated, which is not insignificant already. And I might ask them the council, so they figured eight hundred thousand dollars moving forward, we had the support to move forward from this local improvement district property group of property owners. Does the city council actually have the appetite to gamble with eighty five thousand dollars of contingency? It sounds like it might not really even be a risk, but I don't think it's fair to throw that eighty five thousand dollar contingency out there and expect that gee, maybe we might tell you that the road you bought costs this much more. I'm just very hesitant to do that.
May I ask how many, yes, if the members of the council would like to table the motion and ask the city manager to notify the, the affected property owners of the contingency. Could those council members who are in favor, please raise your hands? Okay, those who are opposed. Okay, I'm going to. I'm going to abstain from this. So motion fails.
There was never a motion, so.
I'm sorry, the vote fails. Two in favor, three opposed.
There, there was a motion to table.
There was. I'm sorry, I didn't see a motion to table.
Yep, Counsel Bisco, motion to table, Counsel Andrade, second, I believe.
Counsel Brewer, I just, so I didn't motion to table. My, right, that, that motion was to separate the question.
I recap, Counsel Bisco suggested tabling the motion during her comments. There was no specific motion made and there was no second.
Okay. Counsel Bisco, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
I don't actually know that I want to make that motion. I guess my question now that we've deliberated a little bit more is just, I, I would like to see that we approve that eight hundred thousand dollars or the seven hundred and sixty seven. So Kevin Fear had recommended that full eight hundred, but my question really is that difference of eighty five thousand dollars. And that was my concern. I don't think that that should be the responsibility in an unknown quantity that maybe we'll come back and say, hey, it costs this much more. Now we want you to pay this much more. So I'm not sure at this point that I'm looking for a motion to table as much as I am not in support of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar contingency that might fall on, on property owners in Philomena. And there's no motion attached to that.
Counsel Nielsen, do you have a comment?
I'd like to move the previous question, please.
Okay. All in favor of calling the question.
Point of order, I'd like to know what the motion is before knowing how.
I think that's probably why the city recorder popped up.
Okay, so Counsel Nielsen called for the question. And I don't know that that needs to be voted on unless there's an objection to calling for the question. And I believe when you said you called for the previous question, you are meaning going back to the two divided motions.
Correct. No, no, no. I mean, going back to the motion to approve the contingency. We have a motion to, we had two more, we, we approved the six zero, the motion to approve the contract. We didn't approve the contract yet.
We've not voted on the contract yet.
We voted to.
We did.
Yeah.
Did they?
Yep.
Oh, you are correct. I'm sorry. Yes, there's my note. Yes. So.
So I would like to go to a vote to approve, to have a motion to approve the second part, which would, was the contingency for up to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's why I wanted, what I called the question, so we can vote on that second motion. If that makes sense.
So the second motion as stated is to approve a contingency of up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the landmark drive project.
Is there any objection? Okay, all in favor of approving.
Counsel Bisco's got her hand raised.
Yes, I see. Counsel Bisco.
Thank you. So not necessarily objecting, but I don't think that motion's clear enough to define what that, where the liability that contingency is. So can we clarify that? And if it's unknown, can we state that it's unknown to be determined at the time of the ordinance?
As any manager, can you comment?
Yeah, so the contingent, the question is for the contingency of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, where that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would come from?
Yes.
Yeah. So depending on where we need to use it, that could come from the water fund, it could come from the street fund, it could come from the sewer fund. It can come from a storm drain fund, it could come from SDCs. We really don't know until the point that we need to use that contingency, where that money would come from. If it's on private property or maybe it's private property, it's in the right of way. We may look to individual property owners to take care of a pipe that they, you know, or a, a tank that they have out in the right of way. So again, it's contingency until we know if and what we're using it for, it's hard to determine where the money would need to come from.
Thank you. Counsel Bisco.
Well, I would like to amend this motion to include the language to be determined at the time of the ordinance. So that there is no subjectivity in this space. Could I ask?
At the assessment ordinance or the assessing ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Could I also ask a clarifying question to that amendment? Did I, I'm just want to make sure I heard when Kevin was talking about contingencies that we had not generally used our contingency allowances before. Did I hear that correctly? I, I heard something of which you said, I just want to make sure I understood it correctly.
We have used contingencies in some instances. I don't recall ever using the full amount of contingency that's been set aside. We found a tank that was buried in in Main Street that we were responsible for removing. We found contamination that we were responsible for taking care of on Tenth Street that we had to mitigate and, and clean out. The contingency is a recommendation by the engineer. It is by no means a a hard, fast number that it has to be. It can be any, any price that, that the council deems is, is acceptable or or that, you know, they just, they, they tack a percentage on to the total bid cost and that's just how they do business.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I am familiar with what contingencies are for, but I appreciate that clarification.
City Recorder, could you read the motion back, please? The motion to amend?
I would like to question, Counsel Bisco made the, the motion to amend. Was there a second for that motion?
Yes, Counsel Andrade seconded.
So I have a motion to amend. The motion to approve a contingency of up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the landmark drive project. The motion to amend is to add to be determined at the time of the assessment ordinance. I'm getting a head nod, so I must have gotten that pretty close.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion as we're at.
I believe it's all in favor of the amending the motion.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to the motion. All opposed to the amendment to the motion. And abstentions. And Counsel Nielsen, I didn't see your vote.
I mean, I'm just struggling with this one to know if it's absolutely necessary to do that or, or how that affects the the implementation of that contingency is what I'm uncertain of. That's why I didn't vote.
It's, um, I think we'll be fine. I mean, the, the assessment ordinance is going to determine the assessment placed on each property owner based on the total construction cost. It would make sense that if we have to use this contingency, we would take the opportunity in that ordinance to also identify where that contingency money was going to come from, whether it be squatter or sewer or, or street, wherever that would come from. So that seems like a reasonable place for the city council to determine where that money is going to come from. At this point, we're just giving some certainty that the council is okay with a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars coming from some fund or potentially the LID if that's where it comes from. In order to move forward with the project that otherwise doesn't have a contingency in it.
And this won't delay construction or stop, halt construction as we go along if we have to do this additional amendment?
If we have an approved contingency, that's the intent is that we can keep moving forward the project. We don't have to hit the brakes. Come back to the council, get approval for additional spending, then proceed. So that's, that's the whole purpose of that contingency is to not hold construction. If something comes up that's not planned.
Does that amendment cause a delay or, or does it not?
No.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Counsel, oh.
I appreciate that clarification from the city manager and that basis. Provided that this, the, the city manager is comfortable with this, I'll vote yes. Just to get through this and go on to something else.
Thank you. All right, let's re-vote on the motion to amend. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the clarification, City Manager. All right, with that, I would like to move on.
You still have to vote on the main motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vote on the amended motion or the motion as it's been amended.
All right, all in favor of the motion as amended to approve the contingency. That and fifteen thousand dollar contingency for the landmark drive local improvement district project with the amounts to be determined at the time of the ordinance. Or something pretty close to that. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Counsel Cosi, if I may, real quick, I apologize, this wasn't very clear. The, the motion could have been much clearer. Again, we haven't done one of these in the recent past. And so I, I apologize, I, I could have taken a little bit more time in my agenda of something to make that a little bit more clear. So again, good result. I apologize for not preempting that discussion a little bit, with a little bit more detail. But that said, we have another one. So now we've got a little more clarity going forward.
Okay, moving on to the chip seal project. Kevin, would you like to introduce the agenda items?
Yeah, we have many that we obtained through a grant to do some chip seal projects and we've also had many budgeted in our line item maintenance budget to also do chip seal. So we, we put them all together and went to bid and came out to with Sierra Santa Fe, which is a highly recommended company. They do a lot of work for smaller cities and even larger cities. Gary can talk more to this. He pretty much put all this together, but they were a low bid. And we would like to move forward with that. We had some alternates identified, some alternate streets that are in need. The bid came in a little bit higher than what we thought it was going to be, but the finance director can appropriate to additional funds to cover that and recommends doing that while the contractors in the city doing that work. Gary, is there anything else?
No, I think you pretty much hit it, Kevin, right on, right on the track.
Okay. All right. In the interest of expedience, yeah, I will move move the city council approve option number one to Sierra Santa Fe and the additional budget adjustment. Seconded, motion by Counsel Cosi, seconded by Counsel Nielsen. Any discussion of the motion? Counsel Andrade? Um, Counsel Andrade?
To clarify the um the places that need to be chip sealed, that the extended ones are not necessarily on Mount Union, they're elsewhere? Or is it still in the area?
I think I can come, um, Kevin, provide a little list of locations, um including Mount Union and the unpaved portion of Laura Benton View Drive. Um, North Seventh Street Pioneer to the end and North Eighth Street Pioneer to the end, North Tenth Street Pioneer to the end, the North Thirteenth Street Pioneer to four hundred block. North Tenth Main to College, College Street from Ninth Street to Tenth Street. North Fourteenth Street College to Pioneer, North Eighteenth College to the North End and Pioneer Seventeenth to Eighteenth. So there's quite a bit of.
Thank you, and um I also noticed that on one of the line items, I mean, I don't know if this is just like a company thing, but it had erosion control as free, I guess, for this company? And then it costs money for all the others, is there like a reason why that would be that isn't company-based?
Uh, no idea why one would bid it and one wouldn't, uh, just must be some internal cost.
Yeah, okay, cool, thank you.
I will add that the um, the Mount Union and Benton View Drive are part of the uh small city grant uh that we have to use, this is a, was a two-year deal, and we have to use it this year, otherwise we lose that hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counsel Bisco.
Just two questions, uh, how often do we do this kind of chip sealing on these streets? And the second question is, will there be any negligible effect to the budget? Why spending that extra? I think the difference was nineteen thousand some odd dollars, I understand that it makes sense when we already have the contractors in the area, but what will the budget impact be?
I can uh answer the uh first question about how often the uh, the budget one. Uh, I think that'd be more for the finance director or the city manager, so I'll start with the first question. We typically chips, try to chip seal streets uh every seven to ten years, depending on uh traffic flow, condition of the streets, um. These streets that were selected uh were chip sealed approximately five years ago. Um, but I don't anticipate we'll be doing any chip seal of this magnitude for at least another five to seven years, just due to the fact that it's it's eating a lot of our budget, so that's why these streets were picked as well. To have them come in and only do Mount Union and Benton View Drive, which was originally our plan, uh, would have been a waste of money for them to come back um in the future, just to do these other streets. We typically used to work with uh Benton County Public Works, they are getting out of the chip seal business. Um, it's a very hard process to maintain equipment, um, so now it's going to be contract uh based, contractor-based. As far as the other question, uh, maybe Chris can help you on that one, hopefully?
Yeah, it's, so it's money that's in the contingency fund for the for street for the street fund essentially, so we'll just transfer that out of contingency and into the street fund. And um, we'll have thirty thousand less in contingency there. And don't anticipate any other street projects that like we don't know about, and so that would be you know, the impact of the budget will be limited to this thirty thousand dollars uh coming out of contingency.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve option one to Sierra Santa Fe and the additional budget adjustment? Please raise your hands. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right. Our next, oh, our next agenda item is the ODOT easements and ordinance review. Um, city manager, I wonder if you could speak to this agenda item and summary and perhaps include the costs that you previously shared with me? Or values, I should say, not costs.
Okay, yeah, thank you, so the pull up my right sheet here. Uh, this is part of the process that ODOT has to go through anytime they're doing a street improvement project. Um, again, these are some of these are, two of these specifically are temporary easements. It's in order to give ODOT or their contractor uh permission to step on city property while they're reconstructing sidewalks, paving roads, installing utilities, whatever it is, the work that they're doing. Um, when the, when the public, when the ODOT right of way shares a property line with private property or city property, the expectation is they're not going to be able to stay just on their public right of way to do those improvements, they're going to have to step across the line so they can fix the, fix the ODOT right of wayside have place to stand, so all along the corridor, Main Street and Applegate, ODOT has been acquiring temporary and permanent um easements. And uh, so the city's properties are no different, we've got three different locations uh where ODOT has reached out to the city and said that they need easements in place. Two of them, they're just temporary, they're looking for just during construction. The third one, the larger one, is along the frontage of City Hall, Police and Library. And they requested a permanent easement there because they anticipate ongoing um need for access there, um, along the public right of way and that frontage. Um, the values question. Um, I sent it an email prior to the meeting, uh, the two temporary easements. Um, file zero three three is thirty six hundred dollars. File zero five five was thirty four hundred dollars. The permanent easement has a higher value because it's permanent. And so that one's estimated at thirty thousand dollars of value. Um, and in each of these cases, this is money that'll just be seen as city contribution to the project. You know, the the result of not doing that would be, you know, we would receive the funding and then we would pay the funding towards the project, so it's a loss either way, it makes more sense just to have the donation, I have to have uh the money change hands twice. Um, so just looking for approval from the council for these easements, so once approved, I can get these signed in the morning, get them back over to ODOT. Uh, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to entertain a motion, Counsel Lo, do you have a motion?
Oh, I actually have a question for the city manager, but uh I can ask that after somebody makes a motion.
Um, I move to approve the language of the easements as presented and direct staff to present the approving ordinance for consideration at the next council meeting, city council meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Counsel Lehman, um. Motion by Counsel Cosi is seconded by Counsel Lehman, um, Counsel Lo.
Yeah, so for the city manager, just a clarification on the agenda item summary. Uh talk about the compensation and so on, and you say that the uh uh, let's see, two of them will, or the two voluntary, there's no no, the permanent is no compensation, but the other two, I'm trying to find it here. Um, joint project, da-da-da-da. Okay, the compensation for the two temporary easements will be used as a financial contribution toward the project and the permanent easement will be donated, okay, but then in each of the ordinances they talk about the 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 donation temporarily easement or permanent grantor for no monetary consideration, so um, I get, think I get what you're saying, there's no money passing hands, but we're, it's a little confusing because you're what you say in the agenda summary doesn't seem to be borne out by the other, my interpretation.
Uh, so the money's, it's basically just going to be a a credit in the overall budget of the project, so when ODOT's looking at where the money's coming forward from this project, one of the budget items in that is uh right of way easements, access of right of way easements, and so they've got a dollar amount there figured. The city's, um the fact that they are not going to pay cash to the city for these temporary easements will just essentially reduce that amount that goes towards that budget item. It may or, well, uh, at the end of the day, it'll have a a financial impact on the raw cost of the project, but the city's bearing more than fifty percent of the overall cost of this project, so that's why I say it's it's really just money that's not switching hands, it'll, it will show up as a as a credit in the overall budget of money that the project didn't have to spend for a city-owned property.
So it doesn't meet the definition of monetary consideration?
Correct.
It's not.
That's just, it's just a budgetary contribution essentially.
Got it, thank you.
And then, and sorry, ODOT rules don't allow for the permanent easement to be given as compensation in that budget for I don't understand that rule exactly, maybe Counsel Brew, or, or, Mr. Brewer's got a little bit better idea, but that's a that was an ODOT rule that was told to me and I said that's fine, well, again um it's a big enough project that um, we just want to get these easements placed so we can move forward.
Uh, Counsel Andrade?
Um, I would like some clarification about the these um donations and of temporary and permanent easements. The the documents themselves. Because they reference Exhibit A, which is dated May thirteenth, and so you see that dated there, but then in that Exhibit A, it references some of these other numbers that I believe get referenced later. Let me find it. Uh, yeah, so do donation of the permanent easement says, um uh, the property described on Exhibit A dated November tenth. And so I'm just curious if there is like any anything we're missing here that might have slipped through the cracks, or if it's just something that we're not it's like routine? Or something else?
Yeah, I'd have to you have what I have with the exception of a I think a, about a I think it's a ten or so page report that came from their assessor that actually did the assessments to come up with the thirty six hundred, thirty four hundred and thirty thousand. Um, it's a lot of data and and kind of nuts and bolts in into the weeds a little bit. That may be the document it's referencing, that I'm not sure what the date on those was, that might be the November date, but I I think that you know, the Exhibit A that it's referring back to is the description and the map that's attached to each of these.
I think it's just the date that they prepared those. And so a different date on each of the Exhibit As. And I think that is just the date that the engineer prepared and stamped that particular drawing.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I was going to add, on the permanent easement, I believe it says Exhibit A dated November tenth, twenty twenty one, and on the um Exhibit A diagram, it, the date says November twenty twenty one, it just, it does not say November tenth, is that kind of your point?
I, yeah, I didn't realize that there were uh dates in the the, on the maps, I was just looking through the documents because I didn't realize the maps were also Exhibit A.
Yeah, yeah, there there's an Exhibit A to Exhibit A.
Counsel Nielsen?
I was just wondering, were there other instance in um instances where permanent easements have been allotted with this and other ODOT uh examples in our city?
Uh, for the city or private pro- private?
Either one, either one, just other.
Um so uh, Jim was here at the time, I would imagine when the couplet went through, there were probably some permanent easements that were given as right of way, um, I know areas used to have houses on them, but no longer have houses on them because there's roads there, so I imagine those were either permanent easements or purchases or, you know, something taken there. Uh, but I imagine some of those where there, I I imagine that there are permanent easements in place along that right of way, where the couplet went in, I can imagine that those were all just temporary. Um, Ruth is nodding her head and Jim is nodding his head, so I think I'm on to something
Yeah.
with that couplet, so um, but you know, typically um, if if ODOT feels like it's in their best interest to have the permanent easement because of future maintenance or whatever, then then they'll ask for it. Um, which was the case here.
All right, thank you.
So just a clarification on this first, um the first drawing, the one dated May twenty twenty one, that has the temporary easements identified for Fourteenth and Main Street, that's that first map. There is a section on the right, well, uh, right in the middle of Fourteenth Street and Main Street, it says permanent easement highway right of way. And there is a red delineated area just on the right side of that map, is that is that a different easement that we're not discussing here tonight? Um, is that a separate permanent easement? I don't see that anywhere else, I guess, is is what I'm saying, and I see where it says the words on this map, permanent easement.
Yeah, on this map, it's just the two brown colored ones or orange that are on the city-owned lot. Number zero three three. Uh, zero three three references the ODOT file number.
So we're not addressing any other permanent easements? On this map? Even though there's one that's identified, there's other temporary easements and permanent easements that are identified on this map, that's my question.
Yeah, this map is just in reference to file zero three three, which is the request for the city temporary easement.
Okay, and then another question I have is the last one. Um, is the permanent easement highway right of way and it runs from, um I don't have the addresses in front of me, excuse me. It's what runs in front of City Hall and the library and the police department. I'm curious why this block is slated for a permanent easement and not temporary? Because the language talks specifically to a permanent easement to construct, reconstruct, repair, and maintain a public highway, et cetera, et cetera. I I don't understand why we only need that easement for this block to maintain the highway. Um, that's one question I have, and then the other question I have is, does this easement put at risk? Um, the large, I believe it's an oak tree by the library, which there was a great deal of consideration given protecting that tree during the library development. And the purchase of the park, so back in that park agreement. Um, and I I don't see where I can see that information here, so two questions, why is this a permanent easement just for this block if it's highway specific? And is that tree at risk in this easement?
I don't have a good answer for either of those questions, Counsel Bisco. So I know that it was requested for permanent. Um, I don't show the oak specifically in here, but the, as you stated, it's for access and maintenance um, construction. Uh, I'm not I don't have a good answer for you, I'm sorry.
If I may, I, does it have anything to do with the cycle track that's going right there because there there's lanes that they would have to stripe?
Uh, the cycle tracks further east than this. I believe it, maybe, um yeah, it's, the cycle track really ends at Thirteenth Street. I know that the striping, so the bike lanes are going to be there, but I I don't think that is related to the the easement on the city property here.
Uh, Counsel Bisco?
I just wonder if that might be information that can be brought back to the council, it seems like all of our other easements, um, at least what's being presented tonight are temporary. So the reason why this small section is a permanent easement is a curiosity. And also with respect to that tree and some of the efforts made in the development of this property and the Mary's River Park space and the library being built, um It would be helpful to know that, and that's not clear on this map.
I may have to bring that information back to the council.
Um, city manager can, do you know the, the width of that easement? It looks like quite a narrow area.
For the permanent one?
Yes. Would, would the easement be? I guess, would it be beyond the sidewalk? I think that's what I'm asking. If it could even include that tree.
Just based on the diagram, it looks like the. Right away starts at the back of the sidewalks. All of the sidewalk is already within the. ODOT right of way. So this would be the actual. City property which starts at the back of the sidewalk and goes. I mean, it looks like a foot, maybe two feet wide, if that. Um, along that stretch. I just have, the map just shows a total square footage. It doesn't give.
Yeah.
A width. There's two markings. If you look at eleventh street, I've got a plus point nine three and a plus point eight three that I. Want to gander on what that is. I, I don't think that's ten feet, so I'm, I'm not sure what that's indicated there.
If I may, I think it's the length of the vertical sections. Um, if you don't count the inner section all the way to the. To the top. If that makes sense.
Anyway, it's like I said, it's a foot or two.
Is there a motion to uh? Table. Table this motion until the question is resolved as to whether. The oak tree is threatened. Counselor Bisco.
So I don't have a motion at this moment, but I do have a question about the temporary easement for the bioswale. Um, I spent a fair amount of time going back in our record, not saying that I covered every square inch of our public record, but I was unable to find any. Place where the bioswale project came before either Public Works or the City Council to deliberate. Sites for the bioswale, um, decisions to move forward with this particular location. Due to the sensitivity, the fact that this is in our park area. Um, and there is a. Certainly a group of folks that live in this community that wish to preserve the park in its current state. Um, I'm also aware of the fact that the presentation done by the engineers and ODOT is proposing the removal of. Ninety-four to ninety-seven trees, many of which are oak and about thirty-four of them, which are old oak, so heritage age. Uh, I'm concerned about the fact that we're approving an easement. Of which I can't go back to even a decision where we decided to move forward with the bioswale at this location or to encroach on park. Space that was assumed to be protected. And so, um, it's an addition to, I guess. An additional ask of staff is I would, I would like to see some evidence where that conversation was held publicly. I don't know that it's there, meaning. We had that December meeting. But it hadn't come before that. And I know that the conversation goes back with Department of State lands or some of our other agencies. And the engineers to March of twenty twenty one at a minimum. Had this been, you know, a space where it's on a back road somewhere. We don't really see it. It might be one thing, but because it is in fact park space that was assumed to be park. Uh, I'd like to have verification that this was a public process first before making any vote. So if that is of consideration, um, these three questions that I have are enough for me to propose a motion to table this until we have information from staff.
Let's see, I still, I think we need to resolve if that is a consideration as, as I recall, we had an extensive discussion on this and did. Did approve the location, but uh. Can't refer to a specific record of that. Counselor Bo.
Yeah, I'm getting a little bit confused here again. We're, we kind of brought up a. Possibility or an objection to the permanent easement. Now there's this one with the bioswale. It's a temporary. So I'm wondering if, if we are going to table it, could someone make a motion to table? So we can just kind of, you know, make a decision.
Let's see, I believe counselor Bisco has made a motion if the decision on the location of the bioswale. Is not. Determine that believe that has been determined.
But we also had the other one.
Yeah, can I clarify, Counselor Cosi? My, those three factors, um, I was not able to find evidence of that public process for the bioswale. It was just a third factor. So those three things, the request was, can we get that verification from staff? And that was. It was just one of three factors as to why I would like to table, make a motion to table this decision until we have those answers resolved.
City manager, do you have a comment? Or can you comment?
I think once a motion's been made to table it, I'm, I'm not supposed to engage, so.
Okay. I'm wondering, I asked the city recorder. If you have a recollection of the selection of the bioswale location.
Again, I, I, I think you need to just vote on the motion. It's a, it's a privileged motion. Okay.
Thank you. Um, and I said that Counselor Andrade did second the motion. Counselor Bisco, do you have a question before we vote on the motion?
Just a clarification. Again, I understand that we had the discussion on the look, this location. What I'm saying is the other proposed locations were not part of that. Public record that I could find. I'm not saying it isn't there. I'm just asking for guidance or providing staff providing that. I didn't see where the council or the Public Works Committee was asked for their. Um, input on the other locations that were a possibility for the bioswale. The decision was made somewhere that I could not locate. And considering the impact to the park and the removal of that many trees, um, that is why I was asking for that clarification. It was not whether or not we had a discussion in December on the bioswale. I know that we did.
I do. But we do have a table, a motion on, a motion to table.
And this is once, once a motion to table has been made, then I can't answer those questions. So we just need to address the motion that's on the table.
Okay. Um, I'd like to have a, a vote on the motion to table this issue. All in favor of tabling it, please raise your hands and say aye. All opposed. All right, motion fails. Two in favor and four opposed. All right, so with that. Are there any further questions before we vote on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the. Counselor Andrade.
Uh, I just wanted to, um, support what Counselor Bisco said and. Uh, in light of all of the street trees that we will be potentially losing. I don't know which ones, potentially all of them. Um, and with. You know, um, taking out those trees for the bioswale. And encroaching on the park space for the, uh, reservoir. It just, especially the bioswale, it's going to take out like a well-established ecosystem. And replace it with a younger one. It's going to completely change it. And. I just have way too many concerns about all of that and would like Philomath to. Start putting natural resources, uh, as a priority as well. Um, preserving those natural wild areas. So I'll be voting no. I don't have a problem with at least the first. Um, the non-permanent, non. Uh, bioswale easement. But, um, I have those concerns about, concerns about the bioswale and then also, um, about why the. Why the, um, why it's a permanent easement for, um, in front of the library and the tree.
So just to respond to that, if I could, Counselor Cosi. So I, I will find out. I'll ask those questions again. This is going to come back to us in ordinance next month. Um, obviously, we're trying to expedite things a little bit by giving you a preview to that ordinance now, having this discussion now, asking those questions. So. I will find out the answers questions. I'll find out about the tree. I'll ask about the permanent. Uh, versus non, I, I don't know. I'll go into a whole lot more detail on the bioswale area. I think the council vetted that out pretty thoroughly back in December. Uh, but I will answer at least those first two questions, Counselor Bisco. And bring that back to you before you are asked to vote on the ordinance. So I can do that before your next meeting.
Thank you. All right, then I would like. Counselor Bisco.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate that you're willing to bring back the two easiest questions, but the fact is this, this was not a. Public process for that bioswale and the community was not notified or involved in that process. I have concerns about that from the level of. Citizen involvement and transparency. I think it's a question that's at least worth answering. Um, I've spent a considerable amount of time looking and have not been able to find it. So asking staff to at least point it in the right direction of where those decisions were made publicly is an appropriate ask, and I would like it to be followed up on.
So I believe those answers were given during the presentation at the December meeting. By the engineer, he talked about. What other considerations were made and why they were abandoned. So I had referenced the council number to that presentation. If the council's body wants to give me direction to look into this more, I can. But again, I believe that this has been vetted out pretty thoroughly.
And just to be clear, the decision was already made before that council meeting in December. This is the decision that preceded that, that placed the bioswale in this location. That's what I'm asking. So I don't know that the council had the opportunity to bet that. And as I recall, that was a meet where, um. We had a motion to limit debate as well. So there wasn't opportunity to ask that question further and in depth at that place.
And the council approved that motion to limit debate, and here we are debating it. So that's my concern. If the council wants to change their mind to give me a different direction, we'll do that. Otherwise, I feel like we're going against council direction to not further debate. I'm, I'm a little bit of a catch twenty-two, Counselor Bisco. I hope you can appreciate my position.
All right, I'd like to, uh, vote on the recommend, on the motion. To approve the language of the easements as presented and direct staff to present the approving ordinance for consideration at the next city council meeting. All in favor. All opposed. All right, motion passes forwarded to. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. And city manager, you said you had something else you wanted to discuss.
Yeah, just to know direction from the council. Um, we've. Um, gotten into the, the practice of running things by the city council before things go to the committees. Um, I've been approached by private property owners as well as, um, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development. Uh, there's some renewed interest in the city considering establishment of an enterprise zone within our industrial areas and city limits. Uh, and within the urban growth boundary generally. Um, there's some. Uh, economic benefits to property owners, uh, business owners that move into. Areas that are designated as enterprise zones by the state of Oregon. Um, there's some disadvantages, some drawbacks to the city. There's some benefits, uh, potential benefits there. So. I just want to introduce that it is in the strategic plan to consider formation of enterprise zone this year in the strategic plan. But I just want to run that by the council's body and get your thumbs up before putting that on a future. Agenda for the finance and admin committee to take a look at and bring it back to the city council.
Counselor Andrade.
Um, can you please, uh? Talk a bit about what an enterprise zone is because I. I feel like I, I don't have a. Clear answer based on the things that I've read.
Yeah, I can give, Brianna, I don't want to go into a lot of depth here tonight, but I'm happy to, to kind of give a general. Essentially, the state has determined that cities, counties can establish. Areas designated as enterprise zones where industry can come move, come in. And when they move into there. Uh, they essentially receive some tax abatement for the first three, or it can be extended out to an additional two years. Where any new property that they build, some new buildings, equipment, and those things aren't, um, aren't taxed for the first three to five years that a business. Establishes. So the, you know, it's kind of seen as a, as an added benefit for new businesses that are coming into your area. Um, there's a lot of businesses that specifically look for communities that have enterprise zones established. When they're looking to relocate because they want to see that, you know, if they're going to go to the cost of. Of moving and putting all the infrastructure in, the new buildings, that they can at least have some tax breaks for that first three to five years out. I say three to five years because it's three years. And then if they meet certain criteria for a number of new employees, number of new jobs. Then it can be extended an additional two years as well, but they've got to meet these benchmarks to get those extra two years. So. You know, the disadvantage to the cities, you don't collect that new property tax that you would otherwise collect that first three years. The benefit is you might land a business in town that otherwise wasn't interested in coming to you. They're going to go next door. Um, to like Corvallis that does have an enterprise zone. Actually, we have two. Um, and so you're kind of competing. Unfairly with other municipalities that are offering them out. So. Again, pros and cons, um. They're widely used in the state. Um, there's many. I could give you all the statistics and we'll go through that with the, the finance and admin committee. Number of cities that have enterprise zones in place, how long they are in place for, what the review process is like. I will just tell you on the, going forward that. Part of the outreach with Corvallis Benton County Economic Development is that they currently oversee the Corvallis Benton County Enterprise Zones. And the, the intent, the intent would be that we would. Expand the existing enterprise zone to cover Philomath Industrial Zone. So we wouldn't be creating a new enterprise zone. They would expand theirs to cover Philomath property in addition to what they're already doing. They would manage it. They would oversee it. They'd do the reporting for us. And so they would kind of do that as. Um, you know, part of their agreement with the county that they serve both rural and Corvallis, um, in Benton County. So. All the details are still to be arranged out. We just want to start that conversation and, and see if the council feels like it could be beneficial for us or not.
Thank you very much. It, it definitely helps give me a better sense of what's going on, especially with the county. Put into it.
Yeah, you bet. General consensus tonight to go ahead and put this on an agenda for the finance and admin committee to re, to take a look at.
Could I have a nod if, uh? We're in favor of this or. One, two, okay. I think the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Bisco.
Um, realizing that this will land before the finance and admin committee, it would be helpful for those of us that are not in the committee if we have some of the contact. Documents as well as to what this enterprise zone might entail and some of the resources and references that you just listed, Mr. Workman. Um, that'll help us at least understand moving forward once this comes before the full council.
Thank you. That brings us to the close of our meeting. So I'd like to, um. If there are no objections, I'll, I'll adjourn for this evening. And thank you all for your time.
Good job, Counselor Cosi. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, all.